Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item B.
Item 7B, receive mid-year financial update report for fiscal year 2019-2020 as of December 31, 2019, and adopt the resolution approving the budget balancing strategies and second quarter budget amendment for the fiscal year 2019-20 operating and capital budget.
So, good afternoon.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council, again, Javon Grogan, City Manager. We are here to provide the City Council with a mid-year financial update and projection and budget balancing strategies. You will see from our mid-year projection, there is a projected shortfall. Let me first say I'm here with our Finance Director Keith DiMartini, who will be giving the bulk of the presentation tonight, supplemented by me. And so, our objective is for you to receive the mid-year update report. There's no specific action on that. However, there is action requested on amending a resolution for the current FY 1920 operating in capital budget and to approve budget balancing strategies. So, as the council and the public may be aware, we, as a city, operate a July 1 to June 30 fiscal year. We do our annual budget development process, really beginning, staff starts typically in the month of January. But that process includes staff work, council study sessions, a budget study session, various public meetings, upwards of five public meetings that culminates typically with a adopted budget in June, and then every quarter, every three months, the city provides, staff provides the City Council with an update. And so, our update this year has a number of items, really specifically related to the general fund, where we are projecting a shortfall. We will go through those individually and in significant detail. What I will say is, we had a lot of discussions at the budget time, and the prior gap was, in the prior fiscal year, was 1.5 million. We worked really hard to get that to as close to zero as possible. We came to about $300,000, and most, nearly all of that was for one-time expenditures, for one-time, using one-time money for one-time expenditures. We have no information that has revealed itself during this budget year that we want to process through and give you in the community full transparency on where we are. As the City Council knows, we adopted a, or we launched a comprehensive fiscal sustainability project to address the city's financial challenges. We are approximately just over one year into that process, and it's a 24-month process. And it's a living and breathing process. And with this shortfall, we have adjusted our projections, and we have some strategies that we want to talk to you about. So, we really have four basic items for our agenda, and those are on the screen. An overview of the general fund budget, specific detail on the mid-year. We will talk about enterprise funds and our internal service funds. Quick high-level enterprise funds are for our funds that act more as lines of business, sewer, where they're ratepayers, water, where they're ratepayers, our cable franchise, where they're ratepayers. And then, we will talk about our internal service funds, which are service, which are funds for us, like our central garage and other central, typically admin services and facility services that we use in-house that are funded by not only the general fund, but our enterprise funds. We'll talk about the amendments, and then we will have council discussion and direction. So now, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director Keith DiMartini to begin with a little background.
Okay. Thank you very much, Javon. Good evening, Honorable Members of the City Council. I will go through the details of this mid-year financial report. Let me first start with some context, some slides that sort of put some context behind our city's annual operating budget and our capital budget as it relates to other economic indicators and some comparisons with other cities in San Mateo County. This graph here shows the city of San Bruno's population data as far back as 1990, and the budgeted full-time equivalent position information for the city staff as far back as 1999. Since '99, the city's population has grown by just over 7%, while the city's position count has only grown by about 2%. And this results in fewer city staff to serve the growing city population. City staffing levels have not been able to reach the highest level as it was back in 2004, so our staffing levels have roughly been equivalent to where we were about 16 years ago. Back in 2005 and since then, there have been some periods of declining staffing levels, as you can see in this graph, which were primarily due to some similar budget challenges that we're facing this current fiscal year. And there were some actions taken, such as hiring freezes or furloughs in prior years as well, as you can see by the declining black line on this graph. This slide also shows a pattern that many municipalities experience, where there is a delay in city resources, in city resource increases when the population increases. This is a common trend of how the timing of how city funding increases actually work, and it's often delayed by economic trends such as housing increases, development, and population growth. So, this next slide here shows a comparison of San Bruno with six other cities in San Mateo County for their current fiscal year general fund budget, and comparing the city, the total city population, or a per capita comparison. The bars break down the major revenue sources in each city. You'll see property tax in the orange color, sales tax in the red color, and so on and so forth. The shaded brown area behind the part, behind the bars show the general fund per capita comparison. San Bruno does have the fifth largest population of all cities of San Mateo County, at just over 45,000 people living here. Daly City, South San Francisco, San Mateo, and Redwood City all have a higher population. But as you can see, our city's general fund is significantly lower than those cities, as well as some other cities with a lower population. San Bruno's revenues are lower than all other cities, except for Millbrae, but more significantly and important to note here is that San Bruno's funding per capita is also lower than most cities as well. Only Daly City's per capita is lower, but their population is nearly triple that of San Bruno. Again, this provides some context into San Bruno's financial resources being rather limited and not nearly as robust as some of these other cities that we often might compare ourselves to within the community. So let me just start with an overview of the current fiscal year adopted budget. It shows our revenues and expenditures in the general fund only. The City Council adopted a balanced budget with the use of just over $300,000 of fund balance to fund very few one-time items. Again, that's a very common practice to use fund balance for one-time items. And this is much less than the deficit that was, that the council was grappling with in the fiscal year 1819 budget. So, a significant amount of progress had been made in the current fiscal year budget, as the City Manager alluded to earlier. It's important to note that the current fiscal year budget does meet all of the, all of the requirements in the city's reserve policy, which include at least a $1.5 million fund balance in the general fund, a balance in our general fund reserve of approximately 25% of annual operating expenditures, and also $3 million set aside in a reserve in case of an emergency. All of those reserve requirements were met in our adopted fiscal year 1920 budget, which is important to note. The revenue pie chart on the left shows the proportional share of the major revenue sources in our general fund, with property taxes and sales taxes being the most significant of all other sources. The expenditure pie chart on the right shows the major city functions that the general fund goes to fund. As you can see, a majority of the resources go to fund the public safety functions in the city. So now, I'd like to go into quite some detail in regards to the current fiscal year projection for our general fund revenues. In summaries, in summary, our revenues through the mid-year are at approximately 42% of the total budget, which is a few percentage points lower from the mid-year at last fiscal year. This year's staff implemented additional methods for calculating a year-end financial projection beyond just reviewing this rather simplistic run rate calculation. In conducting that analysis, staff projected that a revenue shortfall is very much likely, which is why we are before you this evening to propose the actions and strategies to address that shortfall. Overall, property taxes, at this time, staff is anticipating that property tax will come in at budget, at our budget level. Sales tax revenue has historically been a rather volatile revenue source for the city, and it fluctuates based on economic activity and seasonality of purchasing that may occur in the economy. Sales tax revenue through the end of September did show a modest increase compared to the prior year. Sales activity in the San Bruno Town Center, downtown San Mateo Avenue, the Bay Hill Shopping Area, and the transit corridors area did show some, some rather strong sales tax activity and some growth. However, sales tax activity in Tan Fran unfortunately has been declining. Oh, go back a little bit. Our transient occupancy tax is another strong revenue source for the, for the city. As council is aware, we did bring on the services of an outside auditing firm to help us audit the TOT revenue for the hotels, and we will likely see a one-time small revenue increase in the current fiscal year as that audit concludes, and then ongoing revenue going forward. The motor vehicle license fee revenue, this is a funding source that is funded annually from a countywide education revenue augmentation fund from property tax revenues of non-basic school districts. Staff is anticipating approximately $1 million of a reduction of this revenue source in this current fiscal year, which I will go into detail on the next slide. Business taxes is another large revenue source for the city. The city also brought on the services of a consulting auditing firm to help us audit this, this revenue source, to ensure that businesses that are doing business in the, in the city of San Bruno, in fact, have a business license. HDL has been successful in bringing in dozens of businesses into compliance to ensure they have a license and that we receive that business license tax revenue this current fiscal year and going forward. However, there are other considerations and other factors going on, and we are projected to see a decline in business license tax this current fiscal year. And then, the other major source I want to note is our departmental revenues. So, for the Police Department and the Planning Department, they are likely to experience some increased revenue this year, this fiscal year, primarily attributable to the increase in cardroom activity, parking fines, and planning cost reimbursements for some work on development projects. However, despite those increases, the Building Division unfortunately is projected to come in significantly below their revenue budget in this current fiscal year due to the delay of some of the very large development projects in the pipeline currently. So, the revenue shortfall is a summary on this slide right here. Staff is projecting approximately a $4.2 million revenue shortfall in the current fiscal year, and that's made up of about $300,000 in sales tax, $1.1 million in motor vehicle license fee revenue, about $700,000 in business license tax, approximately $2 million in building permit revenue, and a few other fluctuations equalling that $4.2 million. So, I'd like to step through each one of these revenue shortfall items in detail so that council is aware of the work that staff has done to come up with these projections before we move on to...
Sure. I just want to point out for the City Council, item one and item three. Sales tax, while the city is prevented from revealing individual sales tax and business tax payments from individual businesses, it is important to note, when we look at why we are projected to be down in sales tax for the rest of this year, we did have a major department store Sears close. And so, the, the line item there is not exclusively related to Sears, but it is in part reflected of a partial closing for Sears that we, I believe, closed on February 3rd. With regard to business tax payments, the council did authorize the city to undertake a lawsuit against Sky Park that did not pay the city an 8% airport parking use tax for the last 12 months. That business has since went bankrupt. And so, the line item there is not exclusively related to Sky Park, but it is reflective of not receiving those tax payments from Sky Park, and the city attorney's office is in the process of filing suit. I believe that lawsuit has been filed, and we are in the process of potentially trying to collect the monies that are due to the city. But it is important to note that those two businesses, while they are also affecting our mid-year numbers, will absolutely affect our next year budget numbers and likely our budget numbers for several years to come until those properties are repositioned on the market and redeveloped.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll walk through each one of these revenue shortfalls in detail. The City Manager already spoke to much of what's going on in our sales tax revenue projection. Staff routinely budget this revenue source conservatively, given the volatility of potential business changes that may occur, as we alluded to earlier. And with the announcement of the closure of the Sears business in the Tan Fran Mall back in February 2020, that is a rather large contributing factor to the revenue shortfall projection that staff has, has calculated. So, the next revenue shortfall is the motor vehicle license fee. This is budgeted at about $5.2 million of general fund revenue in the current fiscal year. The state of California has passed laws that require a minimum funding level for all school districts, for all school districts throughout the state of California called the Local Control Funding Formula. The primary funding source for school districts is property tax revenue. For school districts where the property tax generated in that district is below the minimum funding level required by the state, the state will fund the difference so that the minimum is met in those districts. Those districts are classified as non-basic aid school districts. When the property tax is adequate, or more than adequate, to meet the minimum funding requirement, those districts are reclassified from non-basic aid to basic aid school districts, and those districts keep all of the property tax revenue generated in that district. The result of this is that there is less property tax revenue that goes back to the state, that then the state can redistribute back down to counties and cities in the form of this motor vehicle license fee revenue. So effectively, when school districts flip to being a basic aid district, the pot of money that states can reallocate is reduced. In this current fiscal year, there were two school districts that were reclassified from non-basic aid to basic aid, and that the county notified all the cities in San Mateo County of that change just a few months ago in December, well into this current fiscal year's budget. When these districts changed, it resulted in less revenue. The county is currently actively working with the legislative advocates at the state level to request that the shortfall be appropriated by the state in the upcoming budget cycle in fiscal year 2021. At this time, I have no update if, if that appropriation request will be made, so we will find out through the state process. In this current fiscal year, the total VLF amount due to the entire county of San Mateo was about $208 million, and San Bruno's reduction is about $1 million. And it's important to note that every single city in San Mateo County is experiencing a reduction of their VLF fee revenue in the current fiscal year. Every single city is. Business license tax, this is budgeted at $2.6 million in the current fiscal year. As mentioned earlier, we brought on the audit services that are helping to increase some of our revenue in this area, as well as staff conducting some additional compliance review work to ensure that all the businesses are, continue to be in compliance with the business license ordinance. The most significant revenue impact is projected to come from Sky Park, the City Manager alluded to earlier. They're subject to an 8% gross receipts tax called the airport parking facility tax. With the closure of that business, we will no longer see that revenue in this current fiscal year and going forward. And so, the combination of some of the compliance and audit activities, as well as the closure of Sky Park is resulting in a projected reduction of business license tax of about And finally, the other major revenue shortfall is coming from building permit review. This line item in the operating budget is about $3.7 million in the current fiscal year. The budget includes a projection of anticipated building permit revenue from development activity that occurs throughout the city in any given year. This projection includes routine permit activity on smaller types of projects for businesses or homeowners, but it also includes the permit activity expected from rather large development projects. And it's proven to be a really vital source of revenue to fund the building and planning operations in prior years. Most of the larger development projects have experienced delays with their projects progressing for various reasons, which has resulted in delaying the permit fee revenue for the city, that they would actually file their application and the city would recognize the permit fee revenue. This slide lists five, the five major development projects that are the cause of the delay in the permit fee revenue, including YouTube, the city's recreation and aquatic center, 271 El Camino Real, which is a 24-unit development project, 111 San Bruno Avenue, a mixed-use development project, and 160 El Camino Real, which is a hotel project. The delays can be largely attributable to limited staff capacity to actually review the applications in a timely manner. There's much more extensive environmental or historic and utility studies and reviews that are required to see all of these projects through the entitlement phases. Also, as the Community Economic and Economic Development Director has talked about multiple occasions, the city's zoning code has not been updated in multiple years, and it's not consistent with the city's general plan and the transit corridors plan, which again results in additional review that might be required or additional time for the review. And then finally, there may be changes that come directly from the developer or the project sponsor themselves, which may cause some, cause a variety of different delays. Overall, the building permit revenue is expected to be reduced by about $2 million, so a $2 million revenue shortfall just in building permit revenue. So now, shifting gears to talk about the mid-year projection for expenditures. This slide provides an overview of the expenditures through the mid-year. In summary, the Q2 expenditure run rate is at 51%, which is exactly the same percent that we saw at the same point last fiscal year. The first half of the fiscal year expenditures are typically a little bit higher when you, because the city has chosen to take advantage of the upfront prepayment option for our CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability, which in the current fiscal year, it's a once-a-year $6 million payment that we choose to make upfront. Instead of making installment payments over the course of the year, we ended up paying a little less money to Pers because of taking advantage of that option, so it just kind of throws off the run rate calculation a bit. Again, it's perfectly normal that we would see these percentages as they are here. Staff has also included the costs of recently negotiated bargaining unit, labor negotiation contracts in the upcoming, in this projection as well. It's important to note here that, on average, the city's expenditure budget in the general fund has only gone up approximately 5% each year over the past five years. That is a very modest expenditure growth, especially when you consider the cost of living adjustments or any CPI indexing assumptions, or quite simply, our PERS contribution rates that we have to pay to PERS are far above that oftentimes. So, our, our expenditure growth is very, very modest compared to other factors. So, given the $4.2 million revenue shortfall that staff are projecting in this current fiscal year, staff has developed a list of budget balancing strategies in order to delay or reduce expenditures and utilize alternative funding sources in order to balance the general fund budget. This slide lists, excuse me, this slide lists those strategies, and I'll walk through them in detail as well. But before doing so, I just want the council to be aware that staff evaluated many additional budget balancing strategies and are recommending this list before you this evening in order to minimize any service level impacts to the public. For example, staff are not recommending any staffing adjustments to the police or the fire departments that may impact, impact public safety or other priority projects. The budget balancing strategies also do not include any layoffs or any furloughs. All targets and requirements that are articulated in the city's reserve policy are still projected to be met with the, with the actual adoption of these budget balancing strategies. Staff will continue to very closely monitor the revenues and the expenditures in departments throughout the rest of the year, and then staff are planning to come back to the City Council at the conclusion of the quarter three, that'll be in sometime in late April, with an update. And any changes to the expected revenue shortfall, we can talk about and then reevaluate any of these budget balancing strategies at that time. So let me walk through each one of these strategies in a little bit more detail. The first one and the most substantial one includes the delaying of a number of capital projects that are included in the city's CIP budget into fiscal year 2020 or at a later time. And the action that council would take would be to deappropriate these projects and then transfer the available funds from the general fund capital reserve fund into the general fund so that we can balance the operating budget. Staff would propose to replenish these projects at a later time through the budget process, working with council. So, walking through each one of these, the, staff is proposing to delay the Agenda Preparation and Document Management solution, and just leverage the existing solution that the city clerk's office currently has, reduce the city facility security improvement project, and just focus on the security cameras piece of that project and other technology in City Hall, and utilize the asset forfeiture funding to pay for that project. We are proposing to delay the Commodore Dog Park improvements project, delay the Fire Station 52 replacement project, and again, focus on just the immediate bathroom upgrades and ADA improvements that are required in that facility, delay the library generator and HVAC replacement projects, as the temperature control issues at the library have stabilized with some fixes that, that staff were able to implement on those pieces of equipment, and then delay the larger equipment upgrade to a later time, delay the Parks Corporation Yard Facility Improvements Project in order to revisit the scope of that project so it meets staffing needs in the future. Staff are proposing to delay various equipment and maintenance projects of the police station, including the HVAC, the roof, the gate, and the fence project, and consider revising the scope. It's important to note that the roof at the police station had had some leaks in recent storms, but those leaked repairs have held up, and the, the building is no longer leaking. And, and that way, we can, we can delay the larger capital investment for a roof replacement to a later time. Also, staff is investigating the ability to repair the HVAC instead of replacing it, which would result in some cost savings in the current fiscal year. We're also proposing to delay the bicycle rack installation program, the streetlight pole replacement program, the traffic signal rehabilitation program, the trash capture device project. It's also, it's important to note that the recently completed public parking lot rehabilitation project near San Mateo Avenue was completed under budget, and so the savings that were originally appropriated in that project can be used to help with the budget shortfall. That's about $72,000 that we can use there. And then finally, staff are proposing to utilize about three, about $340,000 of unappropriated fund balance in the general fund capital reserve that can be used for general fund operations, and that would leave approximately $5 million in the general fund reserve, which is the reserve target in our reserve policy.
And Keith, before we leave this slide, I just want to take the opportunity to say to the council, it truly pains me as the City Manager, and I know our department head team to proffer these capital projects reductions to you. The sad story is the quality of our buildings needs significant upgrades, and to defund capital projects before they have truly launched is something that none of us want to do. We do have a fiscal reality that we need to grapple with, and I do want to point out a couple of these projects, one being Fire Station 52. That project will have approximately $250,000 of remaining budget in it when we pull the $650,000 out of it. And as the Finance Director mentioned, we will continue to press forward with the immediate improvements of looking to add on another bathroom. I want to also point out that the reduction of that $650,000, while in many ways it's defunding a significant portion of the funded budget for that project, replacing that entire station is estimated to be an eight to $10 million figure. And so, by removing $650,000, yes, we will have to refill that pot at some point, but to actually replace that building, our largest fiscal challenge, is coming up with the other seven to, seven to nine million dollars. And so, that is still a hurdle that is before us, but we were able to fund a little bit over a million dollars in that project as sort of putting money aside, and so that we'll be pulling money out of that project. The library generator, removing that $30,000, council may remember that when the library generator needed to be replaced, the city was able to do some analysis and realize that the existing generator to City Hall had extra capacity, and so we patched in the... And so we patched in the library to the existing City Hall generator. And the weekly test of that has been successful in our tests. When we've lost power, the library has powered up, and the City Hall generator has been, been able to power City Hall and the library. And so we do feel comfortable in that. A number of the other police department projects, in particular, pointing out the HVAC and the roof system. Our staff know all too well of the water intrusion issues at the police department and the HVAC issues there. It is very likely that we may defund this project but be back to the city council with a request to pull money from one of our building or reserve funds to replace that building. That is a critical infrastructure building for us. We are going to investigate replacing some of the coral, coils on the HVAC instead of the entire unit for approximately $30,000 to $50,000. But the honest answer is that, that is a Band-Aid approach. And so we're dealing with a significant fiscal reality. And as we'll talk about in a little bit, but we have to grow ourselves out of, out of this problem, and that's economic development.
Okay, so the next budget balancing strategy includes the delaying of filling currently vacant positions. These two, there are two positions in the police department, a police sergeant and a police officer position that are currently vacant. And staff evaluated the potential service level impacts from delaying the hiring of these positions and have determined that there will be no impacts by continuing to delay the hiring of the police officer positions as the hiring process may have taken the full fiscal year, given the extensive time-consuming background process involved with hiring these two positions. That will result in savings of approximately $80,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. The next budget balancing strategy is to reduce operating expenses, operating expenses across multiple city departments. The first item that is before council this evening is to delay the purchase of a vehicle in the Parks Department and reevaluate that purchase at a later time. Staff are able to utilize existing vehicles in the Parks Department and just make do without the purchase of it. This strategy also includes reducing various training in various city departments, reducing some contractual services and professional services in the finance department and a few other departments, the reduction of fuel expenses, communication expenses, various tools and equipment, reducing the streetlight and traffic signal projects and the associated project expenses with that as well. Staff has also evaluated the potential service level impacts of these non-salary expenditure reductions by implementing these strategies. And although there may be some minor customer service impacts at the front counter at City Hall from, from one of the expense reductions, largely, the service impacts are very minimal, and staff can adjust accordingly to make do so that those impacts continue to be minimal. The next strategy is about the reduction of the equipment reserve allocation. So in the current fiscal year adopted budget, it includes an overall allocation from the general fund-funded departments of about $340,000 into the general equipment reserve fund. And that fund goes to support the equipment and vehicle purchases that occur in multiple years to come. The, the current adopted budget projects the ending balance in that fund to be of, be approximately $3.7 million. This strategy will reduce the funds that are made available for future vehicle and equipment purchases. Staff with council's direction can consider reinstating that allocation into the, into that fund during the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget cycle, along with any other adjustments that we may, that we may need to consider. The next strategy is in regards to the general fund unappropriated fund balance. In the current fiscal year, the projected fund balance in the general fund was to be approximately $2.1 million. During this current fiscal year, the city council has already taken a few actions to appropriate that fund balance, which reduces the total of unappropriated balance down from $2.1 million to $1.8 million. The city's reserve policy sets the target ending fund balance in the general fund at $1.5 million. So this budget balancing strategy is, is in regards to utilizing the $300,000 above and beyond the $1.5 million minimum requirement to use that to be transferred into the, to, to keep that in the general fund to use as a budget balancing strategy. And then finally, the utilize, the utilization of Measure G funds. On April 1st, 2020, the new district sales tax measure, Measure G, will take effect with a sales tax rate increase from one, from 9.25% to 9.75% in the city. The San Bruno Street Repair and Local City Services Measure is able to fund city services and facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire prevention services, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression and investigation, pothole and street repair, increasing parking supply, upgrading parks and other city services and facilities, and expanding services to local businesses. It is anticipated that for the last three months of the current fiscal year, that anywhere between $750,000 and $1 million of sales tax revenue, additional sales tax revenue will be generated from the implement, from the implementation of Measure G. So staff are proposing to utilize $500,000 of the projected district tax that is expected to come in, in the current fiscal year to fund neighborhood police patrol services that were originally proposed to be funded through the general fund in the current fiscal year. So moving on to the enterprise funds, here's a summary of the current fiscal year projection for the four enterprise funds. For water and wastewater, revenues for the mid-year are coming in as expected. It does include six months of the new service charges for the five-year rate plan that the city council did approve back in 2017. For the cable enterprise, the City Net Services Enterprise, that enterprise's budget was reduced pretty substantially in the current fiscal year by about $1 million based on recent years' actuals and activity. And the budget does have the cable enterprise at a balanced budget for the first time in a long time. Staff are in the process of conducting a very thorough review of the enterprise's revenues and expenditures to date so that we can develop a very robust projection for where the enterprise will end up at the end of the fiscal year. And so we will come back to the council very shortly at a later time with an update on the cable enterprise. And then finally, the stormwater enterprise. The fees collected through the property tax rule are coming in as expected. So no major changes or issues with the enterprises at this time. This slide shows a summary of the revenues and expenditures for the cities for internal service funds. These funds, as the city manager mentioned earlier, operate more like a typical business, and they exclusively support the other city departments. And they receive their revenue as a charge for service to this, to the departments that they support. There really is no, the percentages that we see are, are normal right now. And you'll see that the self-insurance fund has higher expenditures through Q1 and Q2. And that's primarily due to upfront insurance premiums that are made at the very beginning of the fiscal year. The resolution before you does request two budget amendments. The first one is in regards to a grant that is coming from the California Department of Housing and Community Development, and it was awarded to the city for about 100, for $160,000 so that the city can work on the zoning code update related to the housing development. Staff will utilize that grant to update the city's regulations so that we can be consistent with the state, with recently adopted state housing laws and the city's general plan, the housing element, and the transit corridor plan that I spoke about earlier. Also, for medical supplies, the city received about $178,000 donation from a resident back in 2015 to be used for medical supply purchases. About $122,000 remain from that gift that was received back in 2015. The fire department staff is requesting to use just over $103,000 of the remaining funds to be used to purchase three heart monitors so that, so that adequate lifesaving equipment can be accessible on all department apparatus. About $18,500 to purchase a chest compression system to improve the delivery of CPR. About $4,000 to purchase six rapid response kits to be used for first responders in case of an active shooter scenario. About $5,000 to purchase 475 bicycle helmets to continue a very popular bicycle helmet safety program of the fire department. And then $3,600 to purchase four stop-and-bleed wall mount kits that can be used to provide initial trauma care and bleeding control to victims before EMS arrives. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
Sure.
So, council and the public, as we close out this mid-year update with the budget balancing strategies, I just want to return us really quick to our comprehensive fiscal sustainability track, project that we're really in the middle of. And remind the public and the council that the goal of the project is really underpinned by, by three things. One is understanding our fiscal challenge. Two is articulating it. And then three is developing and implementing strategies. And so this graph will look really familiar. So back in November of 2018, we launched the fiscal sustainability project with a kickoff meeting in our budget process. We had a number of expenditure controls that we put in, into the budget. And again, that was bringing the prior year structural deficit down from 1.5 million to what the city council adopted at $300,000. Again, using one-time money for one-time expenditures, critical investments into the organization. And then we developed a long-range forecast. So instead of doing one-year planning, the, the budget book that you reviewed and adopted had a, a five-year forecast embedded into it. We adopted, we took a look at a whole host of initial revenue strategies, the most significant of which the city council decided to put before voters, and that was Measure G that was approved in November 2019. We had our budget development process. And then we're, we're right now sort of nearing the end of February where we're looking at other strategies that can be implemented. One of the things that will be coming before the council in short order as we go through this budget process in March into November 2020 is a recommendation from the city of staff, from staff that we look into placing a measure on the November 2020 ballot for a TLT increase. That's our transient occupancy tax, increasing the city's hotel room tax from the current 12% to 14%. Council will remember that was one of the other strategies that we looked at. And that would raise approximately half a million dollars of ongoing revenue by increasing the hotel room tax by 2%. And so we're doing some initial exploratory work on that, and staff will likely be bringing that before the council. I also want to remind the public of our user fee study that staff has embarked upon, and we brought the city council preliminary results of that and where the consultant analyzed all of our user fees from across the city. And there are a number of recommendations that's being developed to increase our user fees that will actually increase revenue. Really, on a number of key areas. One of the things that council will remember is that we looked at what the city's fees are for major development projects and the desire to recover our full cost. And so as we bring those forward over the next month, the city council will have recommendations before to increase our fees, thus recover more money. And again, it, it's, it's not a quick project. It's going to take us a long time to work our way out of the fiscal reality that frankly has developed over, and over a number of years here. And so we're all working diligently at it. I think the partnership amongst the city staff, I really want to take this moment to thank my executive management team, but then all of the managers and supervisors in the city when we met to go over and articulate the recommendations that would be made before the city council. I thought it was important that the entire management and supervisor team for the entire organization really know and understand our fiscal reality. And so I want to thank everybody for that session we had just over a week ago. And so some key takeaways. Sluggish sales tax revenue. And that sluggish largely reflective of, we do not have a significant, robust sales tax base because we are largely dependent on a few major areas. Tanfran, Town Center, major anchors in Tanfran, and we see that with the closure of Sears. Business tax revenue decline. Again, we, we talked about the loss of Sky Park and one business that can close really due to no actions of the city, larger economic swings, and how frankly, airport parking, that entire business is, has changed with the advent of Rideshare, Uber, Lyft, and also with the actions that the San Francisco Airport undertook to increase, and over a, a number of years, increase the amount of on-airport site parking garages, which thus, which thus had an impact on the viability of off-airport parking. And so we have Sky Park that we know now has closed. And our permit revenue is down from delays in developments. And this is, in many ways, a bright spot and a down spot. Of the $2 million that we are down in this mid-year due to delays, 1.7 of that is solely related to YouTube. And so that will be before the council in the next few months within the 2020 calendar year. It will not happen within this fiscal year. And so that will be before the city council. And one of the things that Keith alluded to that I just want to repeat is we find ourselves in a position where our planning and development staff, with the amount of projects that are on their plate, the amount of interest in some of our opportunity sites and the transit corridors plan, we're having a hard time grappling with getting through all of that and processing all those projects. And so it's both a, a good thing and, and a negative thing that's impacting our budget. But again, those projects are going to take some time to work themselves through the entitlement and the building permit process. But I do still very much believe that the outlook on San Bruno is brighter in the future than it is currently San Bruno is brighter in the future than it is currently because we do have a number of development projects that are in the pipeline, frankly, with property owners and developers that are eagerly waiting to come out of that entitlement and permitting process to actually have a shovel in the ground and get their projects constructed. In addition, we know we have a number of projects that have not yet entered the entitlement phase. That is the sale of the, the potential sale of the Ingval site to Pulte Development for single-family homes. That is the subcommittee, the ad hoc committee that we talked about establishing today with the high school district, looking at the sale of the Cressmore High School site. And so those projects are, will be entering the pipeline, and we look forward to working through those entitlement processes and bringing them before the city council. But we have a fiscal reality, and we're in a critical point right now, and we need to appropriately navigate it, navigate through it. So I hope the city council will understand that the budget strategies that the staff has developed and are recommending was done with significant thought, significant care for the community and protecting services, but frankly, unfortunately reflective of the situation that is before us. And so with that, we are here at the council discussion and direction portion. We are open for any questions.
I was going to say thank you, but I know a lot of work and time and effort in your explanation and the staff working on this. So thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to, real quick, there's no great answer, but there's a lot that has to be covered. I'm just going to say, and then I want to hear from my colleagues, of course, but on the various items to balance the budget, one is item F, which is utilization of Measure G funds and the amount of 500,000, though, though I think that it is understandable, the discussion, and I think it validates what it was intended for. However, I think at this phase, as we were just initiating that, as it takes effect on April 1st, I'm not comfortable utilizing that as a mechanism at this time. I might suggest if it were taken off, for example, the rest could be passed without Measure G and would be something that we could wait for the third quarter report potentially, see where we're at. If property tax revenue is increased, if vacant position salary costs have been saved, if non-salary items have, and if we do need to take something, maybe we do it out of the reserve funds. In keeping with the practice and the policy, the Equipment Reserve Fund, I believe, has no policy, and it could be taken down more if necessary. But as, just as far as me sitting up here, I know there's a lot to discuss and go over, but on the Measure G, I personally, I'm having a concern with that viability, and I think to the community would be looked like, well, so we pass it, and now here, before we even have a citizens oversight committee that we have now, these monies going because we have a deficit, and I don't know that that's what was intended, though I can understand why it's here as a option. So that's just my, my real concern on Measure G, but I want to open it, if there's any comments to staff first, and then of course, if any folks here, I know there were no speaker cards, so I don't know if there's anybody in the audience. Counsel?
Through the chair?
Yes, Michael.
So it looks like the biggest portion of this, half of it, came from our predictions on the development projects that didn't quite make it in time. Looking back at what we could have done different to help move those projects along, could we have made more investments in staff that could have helped those projects move along? Did we sort of miss a key funding opportunity or something that could have averted that portion of the shortfall?
Sure. Let me take that, and I think there are a couple parts there. One, when staff developed the projections for all the permit revenue, it was conservative. So everything that was in the pipeline was not, was, is not what was recommended and included in the budget, and there was a conservative projection. To your question on would more staff resources or just resources in general, whether they were staff or contract, would have that, would that have been helpful in hindsight 2020? We do have a bandwidth capacity, and more resources would be helpful. Council will remember that there were, I believe, two additional, maybe two additional positions in the Community and Economic Development Department that due to our desire to have a balanced budget and reduce that structural deficit, there was a direction to remove those from the budget and not give authorization for those positions to begin. In the first six months of the fiscal year, we did articulate at that time that that would have an impact on workload and our ability for throughput. But I really don't think it's worth tying or looking back hindsight 2020 because all of these individual projects are delayed for various reasons. Processing, new information that the applicant had to go back and receive, a hiccup that happens in the development review process where you say, oh, oh, you know what, we need this study, or this consultant has to provide additional information. And so to sort of recreate that would be a really significant analysis. What I would say is all of the projects are moving forward. We are confident that they will all be before the city council, those that need city council action, and others that are proceeding forward on either a staff review level or a planning commission level. All the projects are moving. We do have a bandwidth capacity, and one of the things that we are looking at is the ability to augment that capacity with additional consulting work. Those initial figures that Keith put up showed how our staffing is really roughly what it was 16 years ago. And so we are staffed sort of at a minimum, and especially in development review, we are not staffed for the volume of services that we're experiencing now. And so we do need to strategically look at how we can expand our capacity. And the fee study will help out and provide revenue for that as well, so we'll have those conversations around our budget time.
And so clearly a concern is that we, that we continue to make the same mistakes going forward, and you know, these projects are still in the pipeline, and we're going to go into the next fiscal year still constrained, and I want to make sure that if decisions that we're making up here are sort of contributing to that problem, that we be aware of that and so that we don't continue to repeat the same mistake if it is something that, that by policy we're creating down the line. Given that we still have a few months left in the fiscal year, is there anything that we can do in terms of investments in temporary staff or anything else that could help move some of these projects forward so that we could realize some of that revenue this fiscal year?
At this point, I don't know that there are additional investments that can be made that will have a measurable impact on the fiscal shortfall that we're facing. Additional investments would have a significant impact on capacity and the ability of staff to work through the workload. One of the things that staff is currently looking at and the city manager's offices looking at is the ability to bring on additional consultants in both planning for entitlement review, building for permit, for building permit review, building inspection, because even though we have a pinch point now getting through the entitlement phase and the building permit, once those projects are approved, we're going to have a lot of projects under construction, and we're going to need additional resources to inspect those projects while they're under construction and in our public works engineering phase. So we are actively looking for consultants that can help out with that, and the money to fund that we will work to identify.
Okay. And I also share the, some of the mayor's concerns about the use of the Measure G funds for a few reasons, some of which he stated. You know, first of all, we don't even have our advisory committee in place yet. It does seem like we're going askew of what we committed to the, to the taxpayers. And also, it's, you know, we're going on projections and something that's not even going in place yet, and so we're kind of taking it on faith that it's going to materialize. And it's kind of hard to, hard for me to say with any level of certainty that the, you know, that it's going to come in at the level that we're, that we're assuming. So is, is it possible that we could look at just using our general fund reserves to cover that difference? I mean, I don't think we have a policy that specifically says what, what type of situation would trigger the use of those funds, but to me, it seems like this is a budget emergency, and it would be appropriate to use those funds to make up the difference. And then as our policy, refill that as, when the funds are available.
So the city's reserve policy does articulate how there is to be a $1.5 million unappropriated fund balance in the city's general fund. And through a resolution of the city council, an action can be taken to go below that $1.5 million fund balance. A similar action can be taken to reduce the city's general fund reserve, which again is set at 25% of the annual operating expenditure budget. You also can take an action to go below that 25% threshold. The other reserve in the reserve fund is the Emergency Disaster Reserve Fund, which is set at $3 million. The reserve policy says that a declaration of an emergency must be taken in order to activate, to actively use that, that funds. And if you recall, that fund was actually accessed a couple months ago with the slope stabilization project on San Bruno Avenue to declare a local emergency to access that funding source and also trigger the bypassing of the public works construction project bidding process. So the two funds that I mentioned first, the unappropriated fund balance can be utilized, and also the general fund, reserve fund can also be utilized.
Okay. And if I could, between those two, I would proffer that the fund balance would be first in line before the reserve fund. Fund balance is really the way to think about it. It's the money you want to leave in your checking account in case something happens, and this is something happening. And so to reduce that policy by one point, from 1.5 and pull half a million from there if you were so inclined, would be an appropriate shift.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I always saw it as a rainy day fund, and it's, it's kind of raining, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Marty?
Yeah, this is, this is difficult, and, but we have to face reality. I appreciate staff's efforts in bringing this forward. I have just a couple easier questions. How much is the reduction in community day? It's, we don't spend much in there anyhow.
I believe it's 10,000. And $10,000.
I'll share and repeat, my concern is as we, we were at the city council retreat this past Saturday for the public, we had one person attend, and they're, they're here. Two? Oh, two, that's right, two. And we heard repeatedly how across all our departments that they're at their capacity and they need more help to do the work. That registered loud and clear. And here we are, having a capacity problem where in the department that brings the money in, which is in community development, right? And staff did ask, ask in budget last year for that, and I don't want to make the same mistake going forward with that. So I'm in favor of examining how to provide that capacity because more things are coming to San Bruno. And that's understandable that we have to have development to pay forward and invest into our community, and that's what reality is going to be for us. And if we don't have, and the staff to process that, we're just going to be delayed more and more, and we're going to have more problems meeting our revenues to pay for the things that we all want. So I'll offer and encourage staff to come back to us, and I am in favor of tapping into the reserves, and that's what reserves are there for, when, when you need to make up for something when you don't have the funds for it in your general operating budget. I have my apprehension with Measure G. This, this, this amount of expenditure would, would projected to take 12 and 1/2% of it, and if we could avoid that for now, I would like staff to figure that out with, by going into the reserves. But retaining that flexibility and getting the, the subcommittee or the committee, the oversight committee to onboard, because these are some really challenging times. So I'm in favor of the TLT increase, something that we talked about in the past, and it's, it's hard when, when, and we just, and I'll say it, we just approve raises. And I can tell you right now, if I, you don't get a raise when there's no money. That's just kind, that's understandable. We all have to tighten our belts, and you don't spend money you don't have. So it's, it's currently in our budget to pay for that, but it's something that was unforeseen with, I guess the biggest one is the Sky Park, and it's in the, if we are in, if we did file a suit, do we, can we share how much that lawsuit is for, to recover?
So I would prefer not to because we are still supposed to keep the exact figures confidential under our code, but I think as the finance director indicated, it's a substantial portion of the business license tax that the city is not expending, and I would not rely on the ability to recover those funds in the lawsuit to, to fund any, any hole in the, in the city's budget.
And my point, my point in that is that is something that's absolutely out of our control. When a business decides not to pay the taxes and then goes, they did file for bankruptcy? Is that sure?
They have not, but they've clearly gone out of business and closed up their shop.
Right. So, and then, just so I heard it right, 1.7 million of the 2 million in permit fees is one project at YouTube, and that's not going to come back in the, by the end of this fiscal year. So correct. Just make sure I heard that right.
It will be before the city council, likely next, but I don't know the exact date, but the revenues will not come in this fiscal year. Whether the project is actually before you in this fiscal year, I don't know the precise timing on that, but certainly the revenue would be next fiscal year, subject to approval.
Okay. I know we have a couple other colleagues here to, to comment, and seeing what the next step is, I guess we'll hear of that as soon as we finish up. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Linda, I mean, Laura, I apologize.
So first of all, I realize staff has had to make some difficult decisions, and I know that, and I'm sure that this is how Keith takes his job very seriously, and going through this process has been very challenging. I can only imagine myself going through my own checking account and my, and trying to figure out how to balance it, and you see these numbers, and the numbers aren't coming up in the way that you want, and then knowing sort of the commitments and how we can make this happen. So I really appreciate the work that you've put into this and have come together in the hours that you put with, along with your, your department and the city manager, and coming with a proposal that, that has some really good suggestions and things. I also, I hear what staff is saying in terms of not wanting to reduce public services that we offer, right? And, and that's something that we never want to do, right? And I also hear that we don't ever want to reduce public safety, and I think, I think we could probably all agree up here that public safety is going to be our number one, right? Like, I want to be able to feel like I'm confident in that we're securing our city, that we can call 91, and we can get somebody to respond, and, and that we have a safe city. But on the flip side of that, you know, when we have to reduce services on things that aren't public safety, then maybe we need to go down that road. And so I appreciate, like, you've been taking the consideration to remove funds from the community day, because in my mind, when I'm trying to balance my own budget, those are the kind of things, like, those are the, those are the nice to haves, but they're not the needs to have. And so what I would ask staff to do is look at what are some things we've always done that we really don't need to do? Because things like an Easter egg hunt, and we've always done an Easter egg hunt, brings staff, and staff's got to show up. So what are some things we can do and cut back? And frankly, I get some concern not only about this budget, but about what you're going to say next year and the year after that, because when I look at sales tax, I've always said this, they're, they're not increasing in San Bruno. Sales tax has been flat, and now we're seeing a decline. I guarantee you, all of us all shop very differently than we did, did five years ago. We buy online, and stores are closing. So today it's Sears, who's tomorrow, right? You know, to lose Sears, we're, we're no longer buying the appliances in San Bruno is a big hit. Hopefully residents are going to go over to Lowe's and spend that money at Lowe's and make those big purchases. You know, one day it was San Bruno Ford that was gone, and that was a huge hit to San Bruno. Car sales are dropping, so we as a council have to start being very conservative in what we do, and I think that all the departments need to start thinking, okay, where do we cut back? How do we be creative in our budget? Because it's, this is budget this year, but what about in the next, at the end of the year? Where are we, where are we, where do we cut again? I think, you know, I think the message is loud and clear about development. Development is a big hit. I mean, not, knowing that we have developments coming into San Bruno, thank God, that we have these new developments where we're going to get development impact fees, and there's, there's win-wins for there. Because as you, as you very nicely stated, our city doesn't have a lot of funds coming in. And you look at the growth capacity, it's increasing. You look at staff increase, and it's not happening, but yet, and we're only increasing by 5% every year in terms of our, I mean, that's crazy. I don't even know how we continue to manage to balance the budget every year. So I really strongly say we need to start looking at things we always do, and if that means canceling things we've always done that cost us funds, and I guess what I look at is where is the staff time? Right? We may not have a big expense that we purchase these things, but bring in people on overtime. How do we reduce the overtime if we can in that area? You know, again, I said sales tax revenue. I think, I think the comments I've heard from the other colleagues about Measure G funds, it sounds like we need to get an oversight committee in so that we can start at some point very, very soon using those funds. But, but the proposal is to use those funds in the way they're intended as well, so I'm very kind of torn on that because you specifically specified to use it towards police funds, and I think that's the most important thing. And so I think the way it was presented tonight, I am, I'm actually in favor of what you've proposed. And so I think the way it was presented tonight, I am actually in favor of what you've proposed. I echo your comments about development and we know where we can improve and bring in the consultants, I think, because those are revenues into San Bruno that are big hits. And 1.2 million, et cetera, is a hit. So I think staff already knows and they already have a plan moving forward. So thank you for the presentation.
Linda.
Thank you. So when you focused on the developments that were coming, is the revenue that's coming in because of the May 1st development impact fees?
No, the fees that we're talking about here are not the development impact fees. These are permit fees that are paid to the building department for permit review. The development impact fee is a completely separate fee that a developer will pay that goes into a separate fund that will be used to pay for capital improvement projects in the long term.
Can you flesh that out just a little bit more for me? So if they're going to go to capital improvement plans and you were cutting capital improvement projects, will they balance out in the next year if these developments go through?
So it's really a timing issue. And so the answer is probably not within the next year. The development impact fee revenue will increase as development is actually occurring, right? So the development impact fee will be paid typically on building permit issuance, I believe. And so as development projects get their permits issued, they will pay the development impact fee. And then there needs to be adequate funding in the development impact fee fund that can be used and appropriated as probably one of multiple funding sources to actually go and implement an infrastructure capital improvement project. And that might occur over a series of multiple years.
Okay. So with that said, then would we, in the next year, if these projects go through, because I believe what was said was that they're behind schedule or they didn't, for whatever reason, we didn't get the funds for them this year, does that mean that next year we will definitely not be in a deficit? If these projects continue down the right path?
So the projects that are delayed are projected to be before the city council in the next fiscal year. And those revenues that were projected to come in this fiscal year will be projected to come in next fiscal year. I think specifically to will we be in a deficit next year? We are sort of in the middle of the beginning portions of our FY 2021 budget development process. There are three major components of this shortfall that will continue. The $1 million loss in VLF, the loss of the Sears sales tax, and the loss of Sky Park. In particular to those last two, the Sky Park site is a 13 acre site. It is a major warehouse. We have been in talks with the property owners and potential developers. That may see a proposal before the city for a significant reshifting of the use of that project, but that is likely a three to five-year-plus project before a shovel is in the ground. And so that sort of backfill of that business license fee from the airport, we may not see that in additional property tax or additional revenue from that property for quite some time. And I think the same thing is true for the Sears building. We've been in contact with Sarah Taj that owns that building, both before the closure and as recently as last week. But it may be 24 months or more before that building is really, that property is reused and we see additional revenue coming back off there. So we may have to live with this reality for a while.
Okay. So Keith mentioned that there was a potential ballot measure that I believe was five, could bring in another $500,000 of TOT. Is there any anticipated revenue from the short-term rentals that we discussed recently?
So there was, there was a study session that was held at council, I believe, a few months ago where we discussed the potential program features and got some guidance from city council at that time. Staff are working on finalizing sort of how that program is to be implemented and finalizing the edits to the ordinance. And so that will come back to the city council. And I believe it has to go to the planning commission first before coming back to the city council for an action. If enacted the way that the program was communicated to the council at that time, there will be some additional revenues that the city will realize. It will come from a number of sources. The first will be some additional TOT revenue. And so short-term rentals act like a hotel. And so we will see some additional TOT revenue from the activity of short-term rentals. All of the short-term rental operators will be required to obtain a business license. So the city will recognize some business license tax revenue from that as well. There will likely be a short-term rental permit fee that they will have to pay at the Community and Economic Development Department for just the annual and the biannual review of their short-term rental property. But overall, the fiscal projection that was developed for the short-term rental program, if I recall correctly, it was just over about $100,000 a year of total revenue from those three revenue sources after you net out the cost to the city of actually implementing the program. The city would only realize about $100,000 of additional revenue. So again, not that significant when talking about the greater general fund as a whole.
Okay, great, thank you. And I mentioned this on Saturday, but for purposes of this meeting, is the city taking any interest in reviewing the card table fees? And whether, I believe the city attorney mentioned that they would have to be on the ballot? I can't recall.
No, I think I said that the fee, the card table fee is in essence a business tax on the card room and it's based on the number of tables, not based on gross revenues. That is done by ordinance. And if the city were to seek to increase that business license tax, it would require a vote of the people in order to do that because it's increasing a tax. So it's not something the city council can just do.
So it would be, it would have to be on the ballot?
That's right.
Okay. And with that said, where is, has the city compared our taxes or our fees to other cities who have card houses as well?
Yeah. So that work has not been formally conducted. I think this point brings up another issue that I can alert the public in the council to, which is there is a pending state legislation that may actually impact the amount of money that cities receive from card rooms. And the projection is that it would significantly reduce the revenue that municipalities receive. And so we have been very actively monitoring that, working with other cities that are monitoring that potential state legislation to the point where we've been up to Sacramento to attend a hearing there and have been talking to some of the other neighboring jurisdictions that have card rooms. And so there's, you know, if there are ways to increase that revenue, I think that's something that is worth exploring. This year, we have been, vis a vis that revenue, sort of laser-focused on making sure that we're paying attention to the state legislation that may actually take money away.
And then what about using any or asking for any Measure K funds?
Yeah, so staff is looking at ways to explore additional Measure K revenues and will be looking to schedule a study session with the city council on a potential Measure K request from the city of San Bruno to the county.
Okay. And then also if we're, I guess we're approving, right, adopting a resolution approving the budget balancing strategies and second quarter budget amendment. So are we, I just want to make sure that I'm clear in what we're approving. The second quarter budget amendment is based on the recommendations that were just given. So if we're going to approve an amendment, I also wanted to ask then if we could work into the amendment a grant writing consultant? I think that this has been discussed on and off, but if we're looking for revenue sources, there are consultants out there that write grants every month for a base fee. And I think it's something we really need to get serious about with $4.2 million in debt.
Sure. Take the first part, I'll take the next.
May I answer the first part of your question, Councilmember Mason? And so the resolution before the council this evening, there is really twofold. The first part of the resolution is a table that summarizes the budget balancing strategies in order to address the shortfall that staff is projecting in the current fiscal year general fund operating budget. Then the second table on the resolution is what we're calling the budget amendments. And those are, those are the, one of the items was the grant that we're receiving for $160,000 for the zoning code update. And the other one is the appropriation of the money that was given for medical supplies. So that's the budget amendment section of the resolution.
Great. But we're approving an update to the budget.
Right, right.
So can, so my suggestion is to include in that update a grant consultant that can write grants for this last half of the fiscal year.
Absolutely, let me address that. So what is before the city council is an action to amend the budget. So within that action, making any other addition or subtraction to the budget is possible through an amendment. What I would also say is grant writing consultants, in my experience, roughly cost around $6,000 a month. And so if we are going to incur that expense, we would need to identify revenues to do that. And so that is either identifying additional cuts at this time to fund that expense or additional monies that we would pull from fund balance to cover that cost. In addition, what I would say is should we undertake that effort, the city would need to issue an RFP for grant writing assistance, vet the proposals that we get and then select them. And so that process will likely take three to four months. And so I would not make an allocation of $6,000 a month for the remaining months. I would undercut that because that RFP process has to occur. From the city manager seat, I am not opposed to that. I think that it is an effort that may yield resources and it's something that, you know, sometimes you have to invest money to see if there is a return. I think working on that RFP is something that can be undertaken. I would just not want to entertain that on the fly and promise when staff could draft that, issue it and manage that process. I'd like a little time to think about that and proffer that back to the city council.
So I would support that amendment tonight, especially if we're going to be taking money from reserves. The next, I guess the next point I just want to make is regarding the use of funds of Measure G. I echo what all of my fellow council colleagues have said. This was really the main reason that I didn't support Measure G. It wasn't that I didn't see that we have potholes and that we need street repair. It was that I was worried it was going to be used as a slush fund when needed. And so my concern around Measure G is that we don't have an Oversight Committee and it's the first place we've gone to fulfill the deficit. So I would really like the first time we use Measure G to be used to fill potholes. And I also really like the city to create some kind of policy or process wherein Measure G funds are allocated specifically for what they were intended and for what all the marketing material showed, which were sidewalk repairs and potholes. So while I understand that it's an allowable expense, I don't believe that that was really the intent of Measure G to use it to fill the deficit that we have. So that's my, and especially we're using money that we don't even have yet. I mean, it doesn't become effective until April 1st. So that's my comment on Measure G. And then my final comment is regarding the library HVAC. I just feel like the library is already on a shoestring budget and they do so much with so little. I'm really sad to see that the $359,000, the library is what's being cut. And if there's any other project that can be cut, instead of the library HVAC, I'd really like to see that. Like city manager Jevon Gergen mentioned, you know, this is a short period of time to think about grants. Maybe we don't receive this tonight and we receive it in two weeks when we have a little more time to think about this. Because I think $359,000 of all the capital projects I saw, the library is probably the one most utilized on a day-to-day basis by the public. And so I'd hate to see something more cut from the library that is truly already on a shoestring budget and very utilized by the community. Thank you.
Sure. Just on the HVAC for the library and the PD. And I think operationally, the need for both of those may be on equal playing field with the one at the PD even a little bit more critical just because it has to be reset anytime the temperature reaches a certain level in the building. Earlier, when I alluded to, we were going to look at a Band-Aid approach, look into a Band-Aid approach for the HVAC at the police station. What I also said is should that not be successful, we would return to the city council with a request to potentially fund that through another reserve account. We do in our facility reserve account have a balance of $5 million. Both of these projects were funded out of general fund money. And so we are pulling the general fund money to help use, address a shortfall. But should both of those projects need to be funded and need to be done in a more expeditious manner, we could look into using money out of the building reserve fund. Now, the reason why these were funded with the general fund, because when we look at all of the needs in all of our buildings, $5 million is not a significant balance. And so we want it at budget time to use general fund money. But should there not be general fund money, pulling that from your building reserve fund would be a very appropriate expenditure.
Okay, so with no more questions at this time, we do have a couple things. Listening to my colleagues on the Measure G usage of the $500,000, I've heard at least from three, definitely, and Marty, I know you talked about reserves, were you saying that in lieu of G or is that, that's what, my notes weren't clear?
Sure. I would prefer to dip into the reserves than to touch the Measure G funds.
Okay. So I've heard from, and I know Laura was okay, based on the explanation and based where the funds were being allocated to. With that said, if we go ahead and remove Measure G, the $500,000 obviously were short at 3.7. So is there, if we were to go forward with this, is there a way to have the third quarter report come in to us to see exactly where we're at, if there's potential savings? And I think I've heard from a majority of the council, they're leaning toward the reserves, potentially equipment or what have you, or you used another fund, the general fund balance?
Fund balance.
So what do you need from us?
I think the city council could make a motion removing the use of Measure G and directing staff to return at the third quarter with an update on where the city is on the shortfall. And at that time, should the shortfall remain, request that the city use fund balance instead of Measure G.
Laura?
Can I comment? I just wanted to clarify what the Measure G ballot actually read. And it says, "San Bruno Street Repair Local City Service Measures. Now, the city of San Bruno measures to fund the city's services facilities such as neighborhood police patrols, fire prevention service, urban wildfire protection, crime suppression investigation, pothole street repair, increased parking supply, upgrading parks and other city services facilities, expanding services supporting local business by levying a half cent sales tax provided approximately $4 million annually until the end by voters with independent citizen oversight. No money for Sacramento, all funds spent locally." So my question, I guess I would ask is what's the plan for an Oversight Committee so that we really could use those funds, just as you've indicated?
So the recruitment for the Oversight Board, council authorized. And I believe the initial recruitment period closed, but it is still open, waiting for additional applicants. Last time I checked, I think we had four applicants?
Yes, we have four. The application period ended on February 14th, but our office does take applications anytime year-round. But the initial recruitment period did end on February 14th.
It is a five-person body. We will start the process of scheduling those interviews with the city council and still very much want to have that committee established for our budget discussions that will be forthcoming in a number of months. But if there's anyone interested in that committee, please turn in your application. The city council will be reviewing applications soon.
And of course, there were other items and comments. And of course, there were other items and comments from council, whether it's, not saying you haven't looked deep, but if there are things that, I think the comment was, are there things that we have that we can do without, or, you know, whether that means getting sponsorship for an Easter egg hunt, for example, or what have you. But from council, what I am hearing, unless anyone wants to take action on the resolution, was to go ahead and accept the mid-year report, and then also add, to help balance the budget, the reductions, removing Measure G funds, and you, and city manager wanting that replaced with general fund balance if necessary, but after review at the third quarter? Okay. Hopefully I didn't confuse everybody. Does that seem kind of in a consensus of what we kind of discussed? Marty?
It's, it's definitely with what we discussed, is that, I guess that's the next question, if it's okay, like?
You mean, is it okay for us to move forward on this?
Right.
With that caveat?
Right.
Yes, city attorney said yes.
I want some clarification from my fellow council on the grant, on the grant issue?
Mm-hmm.
So that can be an amendment tonight, or we can ask staff to bring it back, or we can not do anything? So I'd just like to ask what my fellow council members believe.
Sure. Marty?
So I'm definitely in support of pursuing a grant, a professional grant writer to assist with the grants, but I also understand that our city manager will be coming back with it, but I can express my support of it. I don't know if, if at this point, unless that's the motion to, to include it.
And then my question is, really to the council, what they'd support tonight, and if you don't support it tonight as, as part of the amendment, then are we all on board to ask the city manager to bring back more information on it, the third quarter report?
I'll say yes to that.
On which part? The amendment or to bring it back?
To bring it back.
Okay. I also would share, because I think the manager said, A, we have to find the resources, two, I think we've learned over the time, to, to be up here and start to allocate monies and rearrange stuff, we need to give, I think, the respect to the staff to come back and look, but I am in favor of having that looked into.
Through the chair. Actually, councilmember Salazar and I actually spoke to the city manager earlier, at the end of, end of the year, about that same thing, and it is something that we, I think we're all in agreement with, and exactly, I don't, I don't think tonight's the right time to include that, but I, I think staff has a clear direction, it is something we're interested in. Spend money, make money.
Invest. Okay, is that?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any action by council?
Through the chair?
Yes.
And I did want to include one final comment. I had meant to do this at the beginning of my last comments, but I wanted to thank staff, especially Mr. DiMartini and Mr. Grogan, for the level of analysis that they did in this, and bringing us all the details and flushing out all of the details of how we got here. So thank you for, for all the work on that. And with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution with the exception of the Measure G fund portion.
Is that?
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And thank you again very much for all the work and the effort.